Meeting for December the 7th is called to order at 6:00 PM. Can we have a quick roll call?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, Mayor Vargas.
Here.
Mayor Protem Valentine.
Here.
Councilmember Montero.
Hey.
Councilmember Patterson.
I'm here.
Councilmember Reyes English.
Yeah.
And we do not have our treasurer or city clerk with us tonight.
Okay, they're not present, that's fine.
I'm here.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry.
I sure did, I apologize.
Okay.
For our treasure.
Everyone is.
It's my fault too, because my video doesn't work today, sorry.
Okay, sorry.
Alright, so we're gonna be led in the Pledge of Allegiance by our city treasurer.
Alright, everybody, please rise and face the flag.
Okay.
Ready, alright.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Alright, team. City council team, madam clerk, please read the roll, so you did read the roll call. So, we have a presentation on the agenda before we proceed, which is item number three, a presentation by airport manager Fernandez, Guido Fernandez, on an update for the Hawthorne Municipal Airport. Go ahead.
Sharing my screen. Can you see that okay?
How we see the stars, yeah?
Alright. Let me start it. Okay, can, everyone can see it okay now?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Well, good evening, mayor, council members, everyone in attendance. Thank you so much for this opportunity on behalf of the Public Works Department to give this overview of the Hawthorne Airport. As most of you already know me, I'm Guido Fernandez, airport manager. And here we have a shot of our runway, runway 251 approach. And Hawthorne Airport, also known as Jag Northrop Field, our airport identifier, HHR. The location of the airport, most of you already of course know, on the westward border by Prairie, on the east by Crenshaw, on the north by 120th Street, and on the south by the business center, various businesses including SpaceX, Tesla, and HHO. So who's responsible for the Hawthorne Airport operations? Actually, three parties, the city, the FAA, and FBOs, which are fixed base operators. Those are businesses that manage private aviation, aircraft, passengers, and services. Now, we as the city, what are we responsible for? We maintain the following: runway and taxiways, which we call movement areas, airfield lighting, turf areas, the air traffic control tower, the perimeter fence gates, and also the overall security and safety of the airport. Now, the FAA is responsible to manage airspace, air traffic, and they also establish both flight patterns and flight procedures, and they also do determine minimum flight altitudes for aircraft. Now, fixed base operators, FBOs, they're responsible for their own operations and scheduling. And we have many FBOs at the airport, some of these include Jet Center, Advanced Air, Surf Air, Hawthorne Hangar Operations, known as HHO, Star Helicopters, Cal Air Aviation, Beach Cities Aviation Academy, and A&E Flying Club. Now, the airport is a division of the Public Works Department, and the staff at the airport consists of the airport manager, myself, one full-time administrative aide, one full-time skill maintenance worker, and two part-time maintenance aides. Some airport data, we average on a daily basis approximately 120 to 165 operations. One landing is one operation, one takeoff is one operation, so that would be two operations for a landing and takeoff. And currently, we have approximately 180 aircraft based at the airport. That means that they have to be there at least 50% or more of the time at the airport. Out of those 180, they're comprised of 14 helicopters, 11 jets, and 155 single and multi-engine aircraft. Now, as far as our air traffic history, what we call our traffic count, you see on the left the chart from 2010 to 2021, October 2021. And you'll see that the aircraft operations vary up and down. There's various reasons for this, including the economy and businesses that come and go. But on the right, you'll see the bar graph there. On average, usually we're somewhere between 60,000 to 80,000 operations per year. Now, some brief history, in 48 was when the airport officially opened. In 1961 was when the air traffic control tower, the building of the tower was completed and began operations. And in 1966 was where, when the administration terminal building opened for operations. Now, as far as average annual airport revenue, you'll see here that the biggest chunk in blue, 65%, comes from our ground lease or master lease with Hawthorne Airport LLC. That's approximately $628,000. The second biggest contributor, the 16% here in the green, comes from our fuel-forage agreement with Advanced Air. Then after that, in the yellow, the 11% is with our lease with Zellman. That's approximately $110,000 per year. And then you have smaller contributors, the 32%. Some of them include our fuel-forage agreement with HHO, filming fees, our ramp or lease agreement with HHO as well. But on the bottom right, you'll see here that our total airport revenue is approximately $971,000 per year. This is our operations budget. You'll see various categories of expenses we endured throughout the year, and our total budget is $969,000. Now, in the last 10 years, there's been various projects that the Public Works Department has conducted at the airport. You see here from 2011 to 2021, the last 10 years, projects of various nature, including noise compatibility studies to study the effect of noise on the surrounding areas of the airport. We installed an emergency generator. We also did an AOP in 2016, an airport layout plan, which basically determines future needs of the airport. 2019, a few years back, we did a runway rehab, we seal coated the runway. And this year, we completed a taxiway reconstruction and rehab project. For those last 10 years, from 2011 to 2021, we've received a little less than $4 million from the FAA, $3,883,000. Now, it should be noted though that from the total project cost, 90% comes from the FAA, 5% comes from Caltrans Aviation, and the remaining 5% comes from our own city general fund. In this slide, we see a timeline of improvements to the airport by Hawthorne Airport LLC. And they're the ones we have the ground lease with. Now, there's various improvements, but I'll highlight the main ones. In 2009, hangars 5 through 13 were built, and that brought 24,000 square feet of hangars. And you see the cost there, $1,800,000. In 2016, we had hangars 16 and 17 built. That brought another 43,000 square feet of hangars and 7,500 square feet of office space. That was $5,900,000. And in 2019, we had what we call the North Hangar Development. That brought hangars 29 through 34 to the airport. That brought another 63,000 square feet of new hangar space. And that also brought a new hangar for our own Hawthorne Police helicopter unit. And that project was about $10 million, a little shy than $11 million. Here's some pictures of the hangars that were built in 2016. The Advanced Air hangars, hangar 16 and 17. In the upper left, you see the office building. And the other three pictures show the two hangars, they're twin hangars, they're the same size. Now, two topics that I'd like to touch upon, one is the Super Bowl. That's a big event coming back, coming for us, to us, on February 2022. And the reason why that's a big event is because we expect a very high volume of traffic. Now, for several months, we as the airport and the businesses, the FBOs, have been meeting at least once a month with the FAA in preparation for the 2022 Super Bowl. The FAA has a reservation system, and we're working with them to implement that system at the airport with the FBOs in order to manage the high traffic, not only at the day of the Super Bowl, but the days leading to the Super Bowl as well. The other topic I'd like to mention are landing fees. A landing fee is a charge paid by an aircraft for landing at a particular airport. We're currently looking into the possibility of implementing landing fees at the airport. We're conducting research and also gathering information from different airports regarding landing fees and their experiences with them. Here on the left, on 2019, we have our new police helicopter hangar that was built. And on the right, we have Air 55, our MD-500 helicopter. And we're so proud to have the helicopter police unit at the airport. We have various aircraft, including military aircraft that come to the airport. And we also have news helicopters, you hear, you see here on the picture on the left, news helicopter, that's a Eurocopter. And on the lower right, we have the Dolphin Coast Guard helicopter. They come here often for fueling and to use our facilities. These two pictures show the aircraft most commonly used at the airport for air charter or air taxi services. On the upper left, we have the King Air 350 with Advanced Air, that's a twin-engine turboprop. And on the lower right, we have the single-engine turboprot, the PC-12, that flies for Surf Air. This is the last picture we have, on the left, we have Flight School, Cal Air Aviation, and the SR-22, these are piston planes that they use. And on the lower right, we have perhaps the biggest jet based at the airport, the G-550, the Gulfstream 550. In conclusion, we'd like to say that it's a partnership between the airport, the FAA, and Hawthorne Airport LLC that allows us to have the safe and efficient use of the airport. As we benefit from increased funding from the FAA, we're able to improve and maintain our movement areas, our runway and taxiways. And as, and as we also benefit from investment from Hawthorne Airport LLC, we're able to gain improved and new facilities at the airport, such as the new hangars. It's this partnership that makes the Hawthorne Airport an attractive location for air travel and a key hub among Southern California airports. As we comply with the FAA rules and we benefit from their funding, once again, we're able to achieve the safe and efficient use of the Hawthorne Airport. And that concludes the presentation, thank you.
Are there any questions from, from the, from the group?
Yes, to the chair.
I have a question.
You do?
So, let me see. Who was, who was the third person, it's gonna be, uh.
Me.
Councilwoman Reyes.
I'm ghetto.
And then Mayor Protem, and then councilwoman.
I'm sorry, I was first.
No, it was councilwoman Reyes English, I counted that, but go ahead, councilwoman Reyes.
Thank you, mayor. Well, first of all, where, where did he go? Well, so there, there you are. Let me say, I'm very impressed, and I truly enjoyed your presentation. Thank you for that so much. It was very nicely laid out and explained, and some of the questions I had were, were answered. And so, thank you for that. I like, I like the fact that you're looking into landing fees. As we all know, the city of Hawthorne is growing, we are developing. And more importantly, we're neighbors to the city of Inglewood, which obviously has a lot of energy, synergy right now going on with regards to all the activities taking place with the SoFi Stadium with the Rams, the upcoming, you know, Super Bowl, and then not to mention the Clipper Stadium that's being built. And then I know that there's other synergy happening in the city of Inglewood with the Clippers' new training facility, the Kings' facility, and the Lakers' facility. Having to say that, you know, having said that, we have so much to offer ourselves. And we, at this point, I believe, have, have, in a sense, a, a, a golden nugget, and that is the city of Hawthorne's airport. And so, I want to make sure that we're doing what we need to do to stimulate our economy here in Hawthorne, and we're staying up to date with regards to landing fees and any other fees that we feel that are appropriate, especially during these times. And as we all know, as a city, being a business as we are, it's all business and nothing more than that. And I'm sure because of all the other things happening with regards to COVID and hate to be redundant and have to keep speaking on that, things have changed economically, you know, personally, and, and, and in very many ways, in transportation, etc. So, I, I like the fact that you're looking towards the, the landing fees. I, I, I want to be able to direct staff to assure that we do that moving forward. And any other, and any other ways that we could raise revenue at the Hawthorne Airport that is beneficial not only to the community, but to our, our coffers here in the city for longevity and prosperity, obviously, for future endeavors. So, thank you for that, I truly appreciate that, Mr. Fernandez.
Thank you.
Mayor Protem?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Fernandez, for that excellent report, very comprehensive. I want to follow up on councilmember Reyes English's point about landing fees. Are we, are we set to incre- increase our collection of fees as a result of the expected traffic for the Super Bowl?
Well, currently, we're not collecting landing fees.
Are we not going to be able to do that?
Well, well, what will increase, of course, would be our fuel-forage fees because of the increased traffic due to the Super Bowl. So that will be increased revenue due to the Super Bowl. But at this point, the landing fees is something that we're researching into.
Okay, but, but we are looking into it?
Correct.
Okay, wonderful. The other thing I wanted to say, would, would you please say a few words about the CNC, the Communities Network Committee? That's, that's our committee that is dedicated to improving the relationship between the airport and the community by addressing the noise impact. So please say a few words about that, it's very important.
Thank you so much. Yes, we meet quarterly with the Community Network Committee. And Ms. Valentine is very involved with that committee, and I appreciate that, and thank you for your support. And yes, we meet regularly with several representatives, council members from other cities, with the FAA, with representatives from neighborhood associations. And our, our primary purpose for that committee is to mitigate the impacts of noise on the surrounding neighborhoods and cities. And, and I think we've made strides and success in that. And maybe the biggest benefit from that committee has been the fact that now we have regular communication between the FAA, us in the city, and these other representatives, to let them know that we really are trying to do everything we can to mitigate the noise impacts from the airport.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Montero?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Mr. Fernandez, yes, Guido, thank you, a very good presentation. I have a few questions. So just going back to the landing fee, so we would not be able to put that in place before February 1st, correct?
Hmm, I, I, at this point, I'm, I'm not certain whether we would be able to do that because that's really close, that's a really close timetable. And since we're still trying to determine the pros and cons of the landing fee, I don't believe so.
Okay, alright. So on, on the revenue chart that you have, that the hangar is 1% $18,000 a year, that's, that's by my understanding, how many hangars is that? Is this one?
Uh, let me see here.
On that, on that, the revenue chart?
On the pie chart, correct?
Yeah, the pie chart, correct.
Okay, in which category are you looking at?
You know, the hangar, like you have like 1% $18,000?
Would it be possible to share the screen?
Oh, yes, yes, let me see. Can I go ahead and share that again? Can you see that again?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Yeah, going down, where you have H, the 1%, 2%, Hawthorne Hangars Operation Lease.
Correct.
Then, how many hangars?
Okay, that is not actually a hangar, that's a ramp that's located in front of the hangar, and they're leasing the ramp from the airport. And we get approximately $1,500 per month for the lease of that ramp space. And the reason why we call it Hawthorne Hangar Operations is because that's the name of the company that's leasing the ramp from us.
Alright. Do, do you have, how long, because I, I know the, the lease with the airport LLC is for 35 years, so how long we still have to go to that lease, are we on like 20 years now, or?
Yes, it started in 2005, and it's for 35 years with two five-year optional extensions.
Ah, okay. Do, and also, do we know how much the, the operation, the revenue and operation cost for the LLC? Do we know, do you have any idea?
Their oper- their operational cost?
Correct.
That, no, that, I'm not privy to that information.
So they don't, they don't share with us their revenues and their, and their costs?
I, I don't have that information, that's perhaps something that I could discuss further with Public Works as far as to what extent we, we have that information. But I, I don't have access to that information at this time.
Alright, thank you. And the last question is, I don't know, actually, it's not a question, but I want to thank you and the public works, you know, to bring all this money from FAA. Because I know it takes a, a long time, and you have to, you know, make sure you write the proposals and, and cross your fingers, make sure the money comes. But we have got, you know, close to, you know, the $4 million from them, at least, I'll say, you know, $3 million at least. So it's pretty good, because I know maybe we've got more money coming to us because of the infrastructure bill, right?
Yes, yes, you bring up a very good point. They funded us additional money this year for the taxiway rehab at 100%. And we have other projects in the future too, an airfield lighting project, another runway rehab project. So yeah, it's, it's a great relationship we have both with the FAA and Hawthorne Airport LLC as far as both funding from the FAA and investment from Hawthorne Airport LLC.
Any future funding maybe to replace the fence with a much better fencing?
Yes, yes. That's actually scheduled too, I just had a meeting with the FAA two weeks ago, and we did put that in the schedule.
Alright, fantastic, thank you very much, I appreciate the presentation, outstanding.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, to the chair, that just brings another question, if you don't mind, mayor?
Yeah, go ahead.
So, Mr. Fernandez, that's, that's another good question because you could tell how many accidents have occurred on 120th and that fence by the different color of fence that's there all the time. One, one minute it's light, the next minute it's dark, then darker, darker. I mean, it just goes from the history of all the accidents that have occurred. Has there ever been a discussion of possibly changing that out to just brick? Or is that just causing another problem, another Band-Aid, if you will, over?
Yes, we, we've discussed that with the FAA. Unfortunately, they're very strict as to what they will fund and will not fund. So, the offenses, a basic fence is basically all they're willing to fund.
I see.
Nothing beyond that.
And then my last question is, I would like to see ultimately the revenue that's being made through Hawthorne Airport LLC myself. So if there's some way of getting us that information, I think it should be very transparent and should show us basically how well they're doing and/or not. And that's something that they shouldn't be afraid to have to show us. So, if that's ever in the pipelines, I'd like to see that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, councilmember Patterson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I want to say it's not lost on me that, according to the report, it looks like Hawthorne LLC is invested, looks like north of $20 million in its airport over the last number of years, is that about accurate?
Correct, between 20 to 21 million dollars.
And that, and so, let's say that the lease comes to an end. What, do we take ownership of all that? All that stuff that was invested, or do they take it with them?
I can answer that, but I don't know if Robert Kim would like to answer.
I can answer that, but I don't know if, if Robert Kim would like to answer that. I, I don't know if that's. I can give my understanding, but I don't want to speak out of line in that. I don't know if Mr. Kim would like to.
Yeah, a- and unfortunately, I don't have the lease agreement in front of me to review. I could do perhaps uh, present a legal confidential with the provisions of that. Lease agreement, including um. The, these payments and certain additional percentage of the income that the city has under the, um, under the lease agreement with Hawthorne Airport LLC.
So you guys aren't sure what happens to those structures after lease is up?
I would have to review that. Um, so I'll go ahead and review that and, and uh, present a legal confidential for the council.
Got it. Um, one thing I did want to, to make a comment about. I was informed that we have two different organizations that sell fuel at the airport. But um, one, because they aren't on the. On, says, because they have a through-the-fence agreement, their costs being much lower, they, they dramatically undercut the other person. On fuel costs. Is there any way we can require um, those to be the same or, or. Tax the other, the other ones so that the, the, the amount that's charged uh, are the same? Does that make sense what I'm saying?
Yes, a- and you are correct that there's two fuel uh, farms uh, advanced there and also HHO. But as far as your specific question, I, I would defer that to Robert as well.
And I'm gonna ask that uh, we refrain from going into too much detailed information about that because there is a litigation. That's on appeal. Um, their city along with Hawthorne Airport LLC. Had been um, sued in a lawsuit by HHO over exactly that fuel issues. And that case is right now on the, on appeal at federal court. So I would want to refrain that if you had a specific um. Information that you wanted to know about that, I, I would also have to submit that as the legal confidential because of the pending matter.
Well, I mean, you have my questions, so whatever format that we need to go through so I can have that question answered. That's gonna happen. So if it needs to be the legal confidential, or we need to do a special meeting, a closed session, or whatever the case might be, but. You have my, my question and my request.
Sure.
Uh. What else? Um. So for, eh, my understanding, we bring in nine hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars from the airport. Airport cost is nine hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars.
Correct.
So it essentially pays for itself?
Yeah, basically.
Got it. And uh, is there a way to quantify the uh, additional? Revenue that's generated by the activities at the airport such as. Sales tax that's happening at the restaurant such as um, property taxes happen by housing the. Uh, hundred and eighty uh, jets, I think it's probably a fifty million. Hundred and fifty million dollars worth of jets that are housed there that we get to, we get some type of um. Uh, property tax, a revenue from. Is there a way to quantify all that stuff?
For that additional uh, revenue stream, I, I would need to consult with our finance department. I, I don't have access to that, that particular information.
Yeah, I'm sure they'll have to consult with a consultant too. But however we can figure that out, that'd be great.
Okay.
But, you know, it's always good to have a good idea of what the contribution, full contribution is.
Correct.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Like, Guido, thank you so much. Great presentation, uh, very comprehensive and. Yeah, we uh, those were, those were great questions. Uh, Councilmember Patterson was asking. Um, those are uh, questions that I have and uh, other council members have, but we know that there's like some litigation that's taking place and. We're not able to talk about those things and we hope all that gets resolved. And uh, the city has been, Guido, the city, uh, uh, Guido and Robert Kim. The city has been in contact with the uh, with the group over there. Uh, the groups over there that are having this problem and uh. You guys are letting them know uh, what the uh, what this city's uh, position is on this. Or are they in the middle of court that you can't even talk to them? What's the deal on that, Robert?
Well, um, we have a claim and there's a potential lawsuit against um, Hawthorne Airport LLC. It involves. Um, dispute over the lease of certain s- uh, space at the airport. But it's a small space that um, it became an issue when Zelman came in and that's gonna be. Uh. I prefer to also do that as a legal confidential because of potential litigation on that matter and we're kind of. Stepping outside of what this presentation is about. We're going.
Yeah, no, I understand.
Litigation, so I.
That's fine. That's fine. We just, you know, look, the reality is, you know, they've. Multiple parties have contacted council members and we're not at liberty to speak to them about their cases because they're in the middle of. You know, uh, litigation and so. We just want to make sure that you're aware, that they're aware of that too, that we just can't talk about it, you know?
Yes, and, and it's.
They respect the process in which they're, which they're going through, so.
Yes.
Okay, that's it.
Unfortunately, I can't.
And then we can't even really talk about it too, so even to them or anybody and the parties involved and stuff, so, okay. Thank you so much, Guido.
Thank you.
Night.
Good night, everyone.
Good night, good work.
Thank you.
Let me take a look real quick here, guys. We've got a couple of things. Uh, number five, uh, so there's oral communications. Do we have any oral communication on anything else?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, thank you for the opportunity. We did have, well, like I mentioned, we have one speaker who would like to speak on item number fourteen. But your directive is to allow them to speak during, uh, when that item comes up. Is that correct?
Yeah, well, let's see, do we have uh, these other items that we have are going to be. Yeah, just right before, we can have him talk right before that comes up.
Perfect. Then at this point, we have no, no, no other speaker who would like to um, comment on any item listed on tonight's agenda. Additionally, we did not receive any. Uh, written communication via email. Uh, but I will read this section. So pursuant to government code section five four nine five four point three. The public shall directly address legislative body concerning items that have been described in the notice of the special meeting. When we reach uh, item fourteen, we will definitely call the uh, speaker who wanted to make a comment and address it at that time.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, thank you for entering that into the record.
It's no problem.
Um, item six, do you have any, any items for your consent calendar, please?
Um, uh, we do have a, a couple, um, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for the opportunity. I have two items on tonight's consent. They are item five and item seven for your consideration. As well as approval um, for a waiver for readings of the resolutions and ordinances. So item number five is a finance director's request for approval of the warrants. Item seven is resolution eighty-three twenty, which is a resolution of the City Council of the City of Hawthorne, California. Reratifying the proclamation of a state of emergency by Governor Newsom on March fourth, twenty twenty. And reauthorizing the remote teleconference meeting of the City Council Commissions Committees of the City of Hawthorne. For the thirty-day period beginning December seventh, twenty twenty-one through January sixth, twenty twenty-two. And that is pursuant to the Ralph and Brown Act and Assembly Bill number three six one. Uh, that concludes um, what's on the consent calendar for the clerk's office. If I can have a motion to approve five and seven, please.
I have a question for item number seven. If we could pull that for discussion, please.
Was there a second? I think there was only a motion, so.
Okay.
Okay.
Montero.
So, so. So, okay, so was that second before or after the request from, I think it was after, so we're gonna allow for the discussion without the vote.
Thank you, Mayor. I was just wanting to have a discussion on seven. We could still vote on the other if you'd like.
No, but like technically, if, if. If a motion is made and a second, we can go straight to the vote without going to the discussion, even though somebody calls for it after, but. Since you made the call for discussion between the motion and the second, uh, we defer to you, so go ahead.
Uh, my question is, and this would probably be for uh, city attorney, city manager. Considering that uh, the uh, teleconferencing uh. Uh, thirty-day period uh, ends through January sixth. Because of the holiday that we're gonna be, you know, observing on the council meetings, our last council meeting is on the fourteenth, correct? We're coming back for the first city council mo- uh, meeting on the sixth. It doesn't make sense. We're gonna have. To make an additional extension, so why don't we have this uh, thirty-day period extended to sixty days?
Uh, because unfortunately, when the legislation under eighty-three sixty-one was drafted, they worded so that. Local agency would have to approve and vote on this resolution every thirty days. That was, was expressly written on AB three sixty-one. It's one of those things that. Um, I guess the legislature, state legis- legislatures didn't contemplate and didn't expect. Uh, holiday seasons when we would have some of the council meetings canceled and therefore unfortunately. We have to do this special meeting and we have to do another special meeting within thirty days thereafter to comply with AB three sixty-one and. And I understand your frustration. I felt the same way, but um, unfortunately, the, this, the, the reading of the AB three sixty-one is that it, it must be. Uh, approved by local agencies every thirty days.
So on January sixth, we're gonna have this item again on the agenda for an extension of the next forty days to February?
Yes, so, but once uh, we pass the January, I think the next. Um, council meeting will be January eleventh. Once we pass that, then we're on regular schedule for two council meetings per month, so we shouldn't have. Uh, an issue with every thirty-day approval.
Okay, thank you. That's, that's it, man.
So the mayor, let me, let, let me ask a quick question to, to Mr. Kim.
Yes.
Hey, Robert, uh, Eddie, you think it's possible that you can put this on the agenda also for the fourteen? So then it will be covered for the eleven of January?
Um, yes, we could do that. I, I, I didn't even think about that, so.
Yeah, just bring it, bring it, put, put it on the fourteen and then we don't need to have a special meeting.
That's a very good idea. We'll go ahead and do that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, there's no uh, there's no second required anymore, right, Robert?
No.
No.
So the attorney came, no?
No, I think there was a second already.
Yes. There is.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, if I may, and I just, I'm not quite sure if we have other commissions or committees meeting prior to the fourteenth. And so if you recall, AB three six one actually encompasses all committees and commissions and boards. And so um, I would just caution that we look into that before we just assume it's all gonna be on the fourteenth. Because we do need that coverage if there's other meetings, for example, civil service, or some of your other commissions and committees that are still meeting.
I, I think we're all on the, all commissions and committees are on the same schedule, so.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, perfect.
That should be fine.
Okay, guys, are we gonna vote on this, uh, Robert, or what?
Yes, it was already second, so.
Okay.
Yes, we do have a first and a second.
Roll call vote.
Thank you. Councilmember Montero?
Yes.
Councilmember Patterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Reyes English?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Valentine?
Yes.
And Mayor Vargas?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes unanimously, five to zero.
Item number eight, the city manager's consent calendar. Mr. City Manager. Um, the agenda reflects that you have items nine through twelve on the consent calendar. Uh, please go ahead and introduce each of these into the record.
No problem. Good evening, Mr. Mayor. I have items nine through twelve for your approval. Item nine, approval of purchase of genie slab uh, scissor lift. Item ten, Holly Park Jim Thorpe Park Improvement Project. Uh, city project number twenty-two dash zero three, out to bid. Item eleven, park maintenance service, city project number twenty-two dash zero one, out to bid. Uh, item twelve, progress payment number seven, in the amount of. Uh, three hundred eighty-six thousand, four hundred and eighty-nine dollars and twenty-one cents due to Martinez Landscaping Company. INC of Simmar, California for general maintenance, project number fifteen dash zero two. Mr. Mayor, that concludes the city manager's consent calendar. May I have a motion to approve items nine, ten, eleven, and twelve?
I move.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
Uh, I moved and uh, I made the motion and Councilmember Montero made the second. Go ahead, vote. Roll call vote, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Montero?
Aye.
Councilmember Patterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Reyes English?
Yes.
Councilmember Ma- I'm sorry, Mayor Proton Valentine?
Yes.
And Mayor Vargas?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes unanimously, five to zero.
Okay. Uh. So, next we have the city council discussion action items. Um, we do have discuss, due to the cannabis working committee meeting with EJAMA. Uh, planning consult- consultants on December ninth, the staff needs the council to decide. Whether they, we want some or all of the types of licenses. There's ra- retail, there's cultivation, there's manufacturing, and there's transportation. So, uh. City Attorney, would we need to go and discuss that first before making a decision there?
Yes, and I believe, um, wasn't there a uh, public comment for this item as well?
No, this is under city council discussion items per the uh, per the script that I have here.
Uh, there is a, somebody wants to talk about that, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, yes, oh, absolutely. I'm sorry. Yes, we did say that right before this item, so.
Yes.
Uh, let's bring that person on. Go ahead. Correct. We did move it in right before, so.
Yeah.
Go ahead, city clerk?
They're calling them right now.
Okay, a- are we moving on to item fourteen, Mr. Mayor?
We're here.
We're waiting for the dis- for the speaker for item thirteen.
Item fourteen.
Oh, fourteen, yes, one moment. Mister, uh, Daniel? Yes, the city council, yes, the city council is ready for you. Go ahead, sir, and make your comments on item number fourteen, which is the cannabis working committee.
First of all, good evening, uh, mayor and city council. Uh, my name is uh, Daniel Flores. And um, I've been a longtime resident and voter uh, for the city of Hawthorne. And um. Her, uh, the implementation of the cannabis pro- program, I've seen has been approved since. Uh, November of twenty twenty, and I'm glad to see that the city is finally moving forward. Um, with this program, uh, I've noticed that many uh, surrounding cities uh, have already. Started to um. To adopt these programs and uh, generating a good source of revenue uh, for their city for years now. And uh, by, by implementing this program towards the city of Hawthorne, I feel like it would be a big. Advantage for the city overall. Uh, there's been a lot of, a lot of uh, cannabis dispensaries illegally open. Uh, in the area that are uh. They are uh, basically uh, uh, a magnet point for, you know, young adults that. They aren't the age of twenty-one yet. They wanna buy cannabis and they're going in, you know, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen years old. And it just, it's not, it's not the, the proper way that, that our, that our city should be operating. Um, I feel that with uh, by implementing this program. And finally regulating and prohibiting the sale uh, for, of cannabis for anyone under the age of twenty-one. That will be benefiting the city and creating uh, a source of revenue that can. Uh, potentially help us with other programs in the future that we may want to implement. Um. And it, it'll drive the legal operations out of the city and create more business, more jobs for the people of our city. And um. I just think it'll add additional revenue source for the city that can help homeless. Uh, that can help uh, hiring more uh, law enforcement for safety. Uh, better funding for local schools around the area, and then it just create a more safe and thriving community for all of us in Hawthorne.
Is that it, sir?
Uh, does that conclude your comments? Um.
Yes, yes, that's about it, yeah.
Thank you so much for your input, um, and so we will be signing off. I, we appreciate your time tonight.
Perfect, thank you guys so much.
Thank you.
Alright, um. For the oral communications, can we please?
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry.
Uh, for these oral communications, can we please stage them?
And we have another speaker. Hi, Michael, go ahead.
Did you guys, did you guys hear what I said?
Hold on, hold on a quick second, sir.
Resident and voter of Hawthorne. Thank you for your leadership in bringing legal cannabis to the city. It is important to note that the cannabis initiative was approved in November by the voters with over sixty percent of voter approval. I urge the council to follow, to allow all the various types of cannabis licenses. To ensure that we have a robust cannabis program that will thrive and benefit the city for years to come. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Alright, thank you.
Was that it?
Thank you.
Yes, those are the only two folks who uh, wanted to speak on tonight's item.
Yeah, so, so let's just try to stage the oral communications in time for when we start, okay? That was it.
Alright, thank you.
Okay, so go ahead, um. City Attorney Robert Kim? Please do this.
Yes, um, I, I see Councilman Patterson has his, his hands up. I don't know if he wants to make comment first, but.
Oh, go ahead.
Okay.
Councilmember, uh, Councilmember Patterson, do you have a comment on something here or about what we're going to talk about?
I mean about the discussion item, but I'll definitely wait until after the city attorney had opportunity to, uh.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, so we have our first uh, meeting with the consultants with the Working Committee Cannabis Program Working Committee. For December ninth. Um, and one of the major issues here is just having reviewed their, the RFPs and whatnot. Uh, the cost for the consultant is dependent on what types of license that the. Uh the cost for the consultant is dependent on what types of license that the city is interested in in allowing. Now, it doesn't mean that the city has to issue all four types of license, but it's. Um if we, if the council votes tonight uh on this item. To allow the potential of all four different types of license. Then the cost of the consultant would also uh be dependent on that as well. Having said that, um it it doesn't necessarily mean that we will actually go through issuing license for all four, but. By council vote tonight, um we could keep these options available. So um you know, a- as we discussed previously under the city cannabis program, we're gonna have a working committee that. Uh implements the program and the procedures, then we'll have the licensing committee that. Uh a new committee will be formed that will go through the issuance of licenses. And then the the third committee will will be the oversight committee, so if the first and primary step is. Um we need clarification from city council and direction as to the types of license that we wanna have. At our option uh available to us, s- so that we could have a direction with the with the the working committee.
Um real quick question, the city uh city attorney, so we're going, this discussion we're going to have on this item will be done in public, is that correct?
In terms of whether we want.
Yes.
Different, we're gonna vote on that tonight. We need your vote on this tonight.
Discussion in public, or are we gonna go in closed session?
No, the this is discussion in public.
Okay, go ahead, Councilmember Patterson, and then Mayor Proton. Go ahead, Councilmember.
Yeah, I'll be brief. I would like to ask that we create an ordinance that allows for all four of those uh types of licenses that are. Outlined in in our discussion, retail cultivation, manufacturing, transportation. And then ask that the consultant that we work with make a recommendation as to how many licenses that we may ultimately issue. And if we're gonna issue all of them right away or not, but I would like to let the ground, lay the groundwork. Right, in our ordinance that does allow for all four licenses to be issued.
Mayor Proton, and then Councilmember Montero, go ahead.
Yes, I would like to see some data on. What types of licenses are typically held by a city of our size. I'd like to see if we are. Um if if if, you know, if if we if a a city of our size. Typically does all four or typically does retail, or what what is typically done. Is there a way to get that kind of information, Mister City Attorney?
Um I I really need the council to vote on it tonight. Having said that, the city manager and myself have toured. A facility where they have all of the licenses. And it was a uh warehouse type of style where cultivation was done inside and manufacturing was done inside. And they had uh a lot of employees working there, several hundred. And uh we were told that the annual sales revenue from that place, it was in the city of Los Angeles, uh was eighty million a year. So um having visited that location, um it's, it wasn't. You know, what typically, for me, I I thought cultivation meant a farm, but it wasn't that. It was. Inside grown inside with all kinds of equipment set up so that there's no odor or things of that nature. It it was professionally done. So for me, I I wanted to, you know, I typically, I I understand how I used to perceive things. That when you have cultivation and manufacturing, it's some type of illegal, you know, gang-related type of business style. But it wasn't like that. It was a full-run operation with many employees. So um. I I think uh, you know, the city, I I don't think this, if we just wanna make these options available. I I don't know what's gonna come out at the end, um but. Uh uh what I'm presenting, uh the city council to vote on tonight is to make those options available so that. We can see through the consultants and as we progress um and draft ordinance and start issuing licenses. Before I'm sure an a- a license is issued, they're gonna have to come up with a facility to provide and use the license. So that's part of the approval process, so I I I don't think necessarily it's the city size that is a factor. Because the facility that we visited was in an industrial area of downtown Los Angeles, but it was a pretty big structure. Um but all of all, they had license to do all four of these things, so. I don't think the city size is a big factor and, you know, I I don't think we need a big farmland for. Cultivation and things of that nature, so um. Yeah, I, you know, I just wanna the council to vote on this to keep the options available.
So it would be your recommendation that we allow all four uses?
Yes, that would be my recommendation, and if, and and ultimately, the committees will make recommendations to city council and. And you five will decide what actually we will do in terms of approving an ordinance and things of that nature. This is just the very beginning phase where um my recommendation is to keep those options available. So the consultant can draft an ordinance and you can approve or disapprove at that point.
What is your feedback on that, Mayor Proton?
Um, well, I'm, you know, I, if if, I I guess we're not really making a decision that we will. Allow all four licenses. We're making a decision that we will draft an ordinance that will allow us to use all four. Is that correct, Mister Kim?
Yes, so that will be voted on later on as we come up with the ordinance. So this is just to keep the options available. For the hiring of the consultant and going through the contract with a consultant, is it gonna be just a retail? Or is it gonna include, is the consultant gonna uh do analysis and make recommendations for all four different types of license?
Um real quick, uh, real quick, I'd like to ask a question. Does this, by accepting this, uh voting for this ordinance. Does this give anybody that's out there uh the op- opportunity to do this by right? Or we still have the uh uh being able to kinda look at this uh and approve and disapprove of projects?
Ultimately, it would be your decision, the council's decision to adopt the types of ordinance and the types of license that will be. Uh issued eventually. This is just uh for the consultant agreement.
Okay, well then, I I think you you, when you say, there's a little bit of a confusion when you say ordinance, ordinance means like this is it.
No, this is not.
We're gonna give him my right, but you need, you're saying this need, you would like for this to be part of the discussion with E Jama.
Yes, correct.
See it through to see how, you know, how it would plan out, and then we can decide later on.
Yes, the. But this is not the ordinance, I'm.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry.
Any feedback on that, Mayor Proton? I wanna see if she has already.
No, I think, I think um, I think the city attorney clarified it for me because he's indicating that. The the ordinance would allow the, would allow us to make the decision later on what use we choose, but it would allow for all four uses.
Councilmember Montero.
Uh thank you, Mister Mayor. Yeah, basically, yeah, we do want to negotiate with E Jama. And to tell them, yes, we want them to start to prepare or or create ordinance that eventually we, the city council, will vote on. On these four different licenses, okay? And and I would say that uh like Mister Robert Kim said, uh cultivation. Is something that later on we'll discuss because eventually we would, we we go that route about cultivation, it has to be indoor cultivation. Right? So so those are the kinda thing that we need to to discuss, but uh the purpose of this night is just to say, yes, go ahead. And could, uh because the E Jama, apparently, they're going to charge uh. A fee, okay, to create the retail license, the cultivation license, the manufacturing license, and the transportation license. And the other thing to keep in mind is that when you do retail, you have to have transportation. And even uh because uh they have to transport the the merchandise from place to place to place. So you have to automatically have to do transportation and distribution. And so so then it comes to the cultivation and manufacturing, so. And like Mister Kim and 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 uh our city manager, I visit one of the uh cannabis's place in Hollywood. That is right there on La Brea and Melrose, and they have all four licenses in one facility. Right over there on La Brea and and Melrose in Hollywood, so. Why, I do approve that we should go ahead with these four lights, and then we'll discuss later on all the ordinance. Thank you.
Uh okay, yeah, no, I I I would like to, just for myself, I'd like to say that I I would like to go by our city attorney's recommendations. With that clarification, the question I asked, I'm comfortable with respects to that, so that I just wanted to put that in there. So we have three votes, but go ahead, Councilmember Reyes.
Uh thank you. I I have a question with regards to previous uh recommendations and ordinances that we already put in place back in. I believe twenty sixteen uh with regards to how many leaves are allowed in a household. And uh the pass-through, medical pass-through, so I wanna see that ordinance. I I don't, I don't remember exactly the ordinance number. But we had already voted back in uh that time for what medical trust, transport was or pass-through. And we also had a discussion of allowable for households. I know this is something probably off uh. Off the block here with regards to what we're talking on, but I wanna be able to see that ordinance. So we could uh assure that we're um collaborating correctly. With what we currently have on the books and what we're trying to do in this cannabis program. So can we look into that ordinance and tell us? Um you know, what more we need to do to maybe amend that or uh put that in a line with what we're doing tonight. Um and I do understand uh the cannabis program working committee uh is set to speak on Thursday. The ninth at eleven A M, and I look forward to that, and thank you again, Mayor, and council members for the appointment. And uh I look forward to the first uh meeting of its sorts, and it includes E Jama, it includes discussion among the board. Uh for recommendations, uh which is basically a presentation proposed by the uh E Jama planning. Uh the agreement, a discussion regarding the scope of work, motion for recommendation, and also members um comments regarding future topics for agenda. And a- again, this is similar to a council, um a council meeting, and so. Uh I wanna make sure that we have everything wrapped tight and everything that we need to to um move this first committee hearing uh forward. But um I do like the fact that folks on the council, um such as myself also. Have been to locations, have been to Long Beach, have been to Hollywood, to been, have been to Los Angeles. I physically have visited locations. Have talked to management, have seen for myself what cultivation is, what manufacturing is, what does retail mean, all of it. And I'm glad I did that because I'm the better for it, and I have more information than most. I'm not trying to say I know everything. And I'm not trying to say that, you know, I've tried this, I've tried that, I've tested this, so let's not get it twisted. Because people will then say that, oh, Angie's a druggie, or Angie's. Let's not get it twisted, but I have been to locations, I have visited and spoken to person. It's not, it's not voodoo, it's not something that. Oh my god, you know, God's gonna strike me down, but at the end of the day, it's a business. It's a business and it's a revenue source, okay? And this is what we need to do to assure that our future for Hawthorne. Is prospering in a way that's gonna benefit many organizations, many departments, our police department. And ultimately provide a benefit to our community, and that's what I'm focused on. Everything else with regards to. Um you know, policy, legislation, how it's gonna be written, how it's gonna be drafted, what's gonna be included, what's not gonna be included. Some of the things that have worked for other cities might not work for us. All I'm trying to do is just work uh work. In leadership, work in in a way that we uh are on one accord when it comes to a good cannabis program. And that's what my focus is, a good cannabis program. And by all means, if uh those out there ultimately that want to provide suggestions. And recommendations, that's what the working committee is here for, and so we'd look forward to hearing from you on that too. Um but ultimately, there's gonna be a municipal code section that's gonna read uh all of the nuts and bolts of legislation. Regarding our cannabis program here in Hawthorne, and I'm not trying to reinvent the wheel. But I'm trying to stay focused on, again, delivering a good cannabis program. And assuring the residents of Hawthorne that we're moving forward based on the voters that approved this back in November. So, thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the recommendation.
I second, and Mister Mayor, Mister Mayor, I was going to recommend that after the holidays, that the work committee. Work, do intelligent, I appreciate Mister English uh accepting of the be the chair of the committee and to move forward. I would like to see the work committee meet every two weeks after the holiday, so this, so they can uh move forward with this program. Because we got a lot of community coming to us to say, why are you guys are stalling uh the program? So I want us to make sure we move forward and not to have uh to be delayed, 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 okay?
All right, so let me complete the, let me complete the motion. I'd like to make the, make a motion based on city attorney's recommendation. To investigate the types of licenses, retail, cultivation, manufacturing, transportation as outlined in this. On paper and in this meeting discussion.
But can you include too already um language that's on the books for the city that we have for medical use and transport? And usage among families and what's allowed in households, so that might just be another. I know, I know this might not be, it's not part of it, but please, I'm I'm trying to make sure that we have everything under one roof.
But that, this is.
Councilwoman Reyes, um English, I, twenty sixteen ordinance, I know there had been some uh statute state legislations. That was passed since then. So I would have to check back and see if it's been um, if it's, if if there's state legislation that would, that would um. That preempt the ordinance of twenty sixteen, so but I I first have to find that twenty sixteen ordinance that would that predates my appointment. So I would have to look back.
And please, if you have to reference uh the city of West Hollywood that started their cannabis program back in twenty sixteen as well.
Sure. So I make the motion based on the motion as I stated.
And I second.
Okay, uh roll call vote, please.
Thank you. Councilmember Montero.
Aye.
Councilmember uh Reyes English.
Yes.
Councilman Patterson.
Yes.
Mayor Proton Valentine.
Yes.
And Mayor Vargas.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes unanimously with a five to zero vote.
And again, and if you could get us whatever the uh, whatever ordinances of um Councilmember Reyes English is uh referring to. Um I think we could, if if need be, after review of uh whatever, leave a con- leave a confidential, I think that would be. If it's relevant still, then we can talk about it in a action discussion item separate from this, I would think. I mean, we could do that independently of E Jama's help, I would think. But yeah, let's do it, okay?
Thank you.
That sound fair? Okay, good. Yeah. We have a, we have a closed session. I actually thought this last item was gonna take a bit longer, but it 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 was pretty straightforward. But thanks for your clear uh explanations. In closed session tonight, we have item fifteen, City Attorney. Can you please read this item into the record?
Thank you, Mister Mayor. Uh in closed session is a conference with legal counsel on an existing litigation pursuant to government code section five four nine five six point nine. Subsection D one, case name is unspecified because disclosure would jeopardize service of process. As pursuant to government code section five four nine five four point five subsection C.
Is there any member of the public that would like to address, excuse me, address item fifteen? If there's none, um I declare oral communications closed, so ordered. Uh we will now recess the city council meeting to conduct a closed session for a conference pursuant to the agenda. Uh Mister, Mister City Attorney, do you anticipate this being lengthy or not, just for those people that are watching and keeping track?
Um hopefully, it won't be lengthy. Um it it depends on what the discussion is.
Okay.
Closed session.
Thank you. So I will now recess the uh city council meeting for a conference pursuant to the agenda. At seven oh eight. We are in recess. We are in recess.
As the nation's doctor, I often get asked, what should I do if I think I might have coronavirus?
People who are sick should stay home. You don't go to an emergency room, you don't go to a clinic. Get on the phone and you ask for advice and instructions from your physician.
We don't want you to go into the ER or the doctor's office without talking to them first because you might spread coronavirus to someone else. Please visit coronavirus.gov for more information.
New York is the canary in the coal mine. What happens to New York is going to wind up happening in your city and in your community. We are going to fight every way we can to save every life that we can. We are all first responders. Your actions can either save or endanger a life. Job one has to be save lives. That has to be the priority.
You have to stay home.
Not just to protect yourself, but to protect others.
Stay at least six feet away from other people. Two, arms length. Just because you're at home doesn't mean that we can't be alone together.
Together.
Three, two, one, now dry!
Wash your hands for 20 seconds, just like Elmo.
How do you protect yourself and others from coronavirus?
Avoid touching your eyes, your nose, and your mouth.
Wash your hands often with soap and water for 20-plus seconds.
Clean and disinfect surfaces and objects.
Together, we can help slow the spread.
When you're interacting with others who are not members of your household in both public and private spaces, wear a cloth face covering. Before you put it on, wash your hands or sanitize them. Before you take it off, make sure your hands are clean. And after you take it off, wash your hands again. Wash your cloth face coverings often. Wear a clean one every single day. Learn more at publichealth.lacounty.gov.
Hello, I'm Gloria Gray, president of the West Basin Municipal Water District Board, where we take pride in delivering safe, reliable water to our communities.
According to the CDC, coronavirus is not transmitted through water.
West Basin works diligently to protect the quality and reliability of the water supply. On behalf of the West Basin Board of Directors, we hope you and your family are staying safe and healthy.
For more information, visit westbasin.org.
Even though California is flourishing in many ways, we are also facing greater challenges than ever due to climate change. Cyclical droughts, intense fire seasons, and pollution endangers human health and the environment. In California, we're doing something about it.
Governor Jerry Brown today signed a bill regulating emissions from landfills to fight climate change.
The organics law calls on the state's 40 million residents, its businesses, and every level of government to combat climate change by getting food, green waste, and other organics out of our landfills and get more good food to the 1 in 8 Californians, including the 1 in 5 children who are food insecure. At 23 million tons, organics are by far the largest material type landfill in California each year. Fortunately, yard, food, and other organic waste can be recycled into compost and renewable natural gas. 1383 requires new rules and regulations to achieve a 50% reduction in organic waste disposal by 2020, a 75% reduction by 2025, and actions to make sure 20% of currently disposed edible food is redirected to Californians in need. Enforcement begins once the law takes effect on January 1st, 2022. Achieving these targets demands a new approach and substantial new investments to restructure the waste management system of the world's fifth-largest economy. CalRecycle began rulemaking immediately after the law's passage in 2016. Jurisdictions should start planning now to meet the law's requirements.
1383 will affect every resident and every business in the state of California. CalRecycle is here to help local governments understand and implement this new program.
Start planning now to connect large food waste generators with your local food recovery organizations to help feed hungry people where you live. Start planning now to expand organic waste collection to all homes and businesses in your area and increase your local capacity to recycle this material. Start planning now for rate changes to fund these efforts, new ordinances for mandatory recycling enforcement, and changes to existing franchise agreements or hauler permits.
Some of this is new and some of it requires more of what you've already been doing. But all of it requires planning now to make sure programs are in place by January 1, 2022.
Recycling organic waste is an essential part of the state's strategy and one of the most cost-effective ways every Californian can reduce their own greenhouse gas footprint. Together, California will create a more sustainable future, combat climate change, feed more Californians, and improve the health of our people and our planet. CalRecycle is your committed partner in this effort. Get in touch with us to learn more about available support and resources to help you succeed. And talk to your staff about strategies for the next steps for 1383 implementation.
The city of Hawthorne has revised the Hawthorne Municipal Code twelve dot zero four dot zero three one pertaining to sidewalk repair and maintenance. The revised code places new duties and obligations on the property owners adjacent to sidewalks in conformance with the California Streets and Highways Code. The revised municipal code section can be found online at the website shown on the screen. A copy of section twelve dot zero four dot zero three one is also available from the city clerk's office. Property owners are encouraged to consult their own legal counsel or insurance companies if they have questions about the legal impact of the new code section.
Two P M. We have met in closed session for a conference pursuant to the agenda listed as item number fifteen. City Attorney Kim, will you provide a readout on that, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A report was provided to city council members in closed session. No reportable action was taken.
If there's nothing further from council members or staff?
Mr. Mayor, I want to say something before we adjourn.
Go ahead.
I, I just want you to adjourn this meeting and remember of the Pearl Harbor, you know, memorial because it's eighty years today that the Pearl Harbor in Hawaii was bombed by the Japanese, so that just to remember, remember of all of those lost, you know, almost close to three thousand souls that were lost on that day. Okay?
Thank you, council member.
Thank you.
So we'll be adjourning in memory of those who passed on December seventh, nineteen forty-one.
Can we provide any other closing remarks, or is this, is that it?
No, this is it. Nothing else has been?
From council?
That's right. Oh, yeah. Just going by the...
Nope, no.
Be violation.
It's a, we, it's a special meeting, so we don't have official reports, so, so that's the reason why. If you want to say something?
Is there anything quick you would like to say?
Very briefly.
Super briefly.
Yeah, I'll put it in my social media. Follow people, follow me, and I'll tell...
No, 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 no. Tell us now, tell us now.
Follow me, follow me.
No, is there really anything?
You close out, thank you.
Oh, okay. All right, all right. All right. No, but if you have anything, anybody has anything brief to say, you can say.
I just wanted to make mention that our first cannabis program working committee meeting will be taking place this Thursday, December ninth, at eleven A M. We have the committee members and myself that's going to be entertaining the first meeting, and I encourage those that have any interest or stakeholders in the, you know, agenda item to please participate. That's it.
Thank you. All right, so this meeting is adjourned at seven fifty-four.
Thank you, good night.